Put allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I welcome everyone to our meeting this evening. Thank you for those joining us in person and also those joining us via Zoom meetings. A couple of quick countdowns. Present for this evening's meeting. There are a couple more members. We also had an executive session for approximately 30 minutes prior to this evening's meeting to discuss court legal matters and also to discuss the superintendent and assistant superintendent of the objective performance standards that will also form their evaluation for the evening. Now to comments to the board. Are there any citizens' comments to the board on any agenda items?
Yes, we have a few of those. I will read them out loud. For those of you at home, we are trying to speak a little louder because we have a big rainstorm going over top of us. So hopefully, our board members will remember this and everybody will speak loud and we can hear folks. All right, let's see here. We'll start out with comment number one on an agenda item from Jessica Oberland, 4925 Crossroads Drive. Has the district considered doing e-school for the start of school to simply watch the numbers and bring everyone back maybe for the second marking period? Parents need to know so they can plan and not do life changes last minute. Number two, Melissa Halavati, sorry, 264 Ridge Road. I do not feel anyone is thinking about the kids with these decisions. I have a child that literally broke down in tears when he could not return to school. I work in healthcare and I feel there is no concern with the child's return to school. There is no greater risk to them returning to school versus participating in sports, which has been allowed to continue. Andrea Zay, 201 Glencoe Road. If the district decides to go with the hybrid plan of having K-5 in-person and 6-12 remote, will that be for the entire year or will the board revisit their decision each marking period and make a new decision then based on the counties or governor's recommendations? Thank you. Ken Zook, 401 South 21st Street. If we end up with an alternate attendance arrangement, what is the criteria for getting kids back into school? Lynn Wood, 578 Fox Ridge Lane. We wanted to make a comment and question about the hybrid plan. Has the committee looked into revising the hybrid plan so that the 6 through 12 students get some in-person instruction if we have to go to this? The middle and high school students need in-person instruction just as much as the elementary students. They also need to be able to socialize with their peers and teachers. Our own students really need the in-person instruction to get the most out of their education. If we wanted them to learn online, we would have picked that option. Most of the districts in the area have a hybrid plan where their 6th to 12th grade students get at least two days of in-person instruction and the other days are online. We hope the board takes this into consideration if we do go to a hybrid plan. We wanted to say thank you to the board and all of the administration for their hard work. Comment on non-agenda item. Comment on agenda item. Also, Ken and Aaron Zook, 401 South 21st Street. As parents of five students in the district, we just wanted to reiterate our continued support of the currently approved health and safety plan for reopening schools. We appreciate the board's concern for the total health of our community's children, which obviously includes factors such as mental health and social development. Our kids felt isolated and lost for much of the quarantine period and we are hoping that if school cannot be in-person, it will be more personal than what we had at the end of last year. We feel strongly that live instruction and live, real-time access to their teachers, at least daily, will go a long way to help with this and ask that the district do everything it can to empower improved interactions between students and teachers. Okay, our projectors just, yeah. No, Zoom is still up here. And the Crestron should now be returning. So hopefully, things will be coming back up here. To the folks at home, in case you're wondering, we just lost our overhead projector and sound system. So bear with us.
I just have to figure out how to drink.
Yes, that was all the comments that we had at this time.
With that, I will move on to board representatives' comments. Principals, if somebody wants to jump in, I will turn it over to you guys.
I can jump in first. Just so you know, some of the other administrators are having power issues at their homes, so.
I think so. It says we're connected to the audio, so let's make sure. So yes, we're loading the applications here. Hang on, principals. We're really good. I'm pretty sure they can. The speakers aren't quite in here. Starting the system. Yes, everyone at home, thank you for holding. Oh, yes, sorry. All right, here we go.
So apparently we have some power on this.
No. Yeah. But not to like, crazy. But yes, we would hear the.
Okay, and we're back. You're ready. Okay.
Yeah, there's some.
One of the principals want to start off, hopefully.
Are you able to hear me, John? John?
Harris Bueller, anybody? Were you there? Anybody? Anybody?
Can't hear me.
Okay. So let's test the speaker.
Can you hear me?
Again, George and I are George and I are at the middle school, so we can hear you.
No, not sure what happened to our audio here.
We can hear them, but evidently they can't hear us.
No, I'm telling Mary we can.
Someone just texted Zoom.
Yeah, Zoom can still hear us, so.
You guys there?
We're here.
We're on George's computer, we're here.
Go for it.
All right, thanks, guys. Sorry for the interruption there. Paula, since you're there, if you want to go ahead and start and we will resume with the board representatives' comments.
All right, sorry about that. A bunch of us lost power. So, okay, let's switch gears here. We have, you know, really, I think this week really, really accomplished a lot. Our counselors are busy getting people enrolled with the e-school and making sure that our class sizes are balanced and getting that information out. We've met and you'll hear more about that later. The initial Canvas LMS trainings and staffs. We have a team of teachers that are leading that. They're doing an awesome job. Our custodians just finished, I don't know if the board members, if you came in tonight, noticed how shiny the floor was, but they were able to get the floors finished and in all of the main hallways. And now we are at a point where we are putting down, now that that cleaning is all finished, we're putting down our social distancing decals and our signage. So we got about halfway with that today. We'll finish that up tomorrow and really just getting ready for our in-services next week. And, you know, it'll be good to see teachers again. And just everybody's kind of like focused forward and getting things done here in this last remaining couple of days. And I'll turn it over to George.
I would say that at the middle school, a lot of the same things are happening as at the high school. Custodial staff has us in pretty much move-in condition. The teachers have set up their class seating arrangements, which are different in all rooms now than they were about three weeks ago. We are also getting ready for the in-service next week. Looking forward to seeing all our teachers again. And the counselors, as Paula mentioned, have been working really in hyperdrive, getting the kids set up with their e-school system and also making sure that our sections of classes are balanced so that we won't have, say, a language arts class that has three sections. One will be 26 and the other will be 18. We have, Sherry Ulrich did a great job of trying to make sure that there's the same number of students in each of the sections, which will make a great difference when we're moving into the building. So beyond that, we are getting every day, it seems like we're one step closer. And what we have running around in our minds is becoming real and that's a good thing. So at this time, I will turn it over to Mr. Bennett.
Thanks, George. Can you guys hear me, John?
Yes, we can hear you. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can. I could hear you the whole time, but didn't seem like you could hear me earlier. Sorry about that. I'm sitting in the office at Lindtown and there's no power, but glad things are working. So I'm reading my notes from the light on my cellphone. So speaking to some, a lot of the same things that George and Paula were talking about. Lindtown, the building looks amazing. The custodians, as always, have gone above and beyond and have everything ready. We're getting close to the one-way signage and things going down on the floors and around the building. But they wanted to have everything finished and really clean before they did that, so we're excited for that. Spent some time this morning with Jen Sands, the counselor, updating rosters as well. So with our e-school kids kind of finishing off in terms of people deciding to sign up for that, we're looking at class averages of 18 in 4th grade and about 16 in 5th grade currently. So we're going to adjust those rosters and again, balance the rooms. And those letters are set to go home to parents tomorrow. And then just a couple of thank yous. First of all, to the PSA, the elementary PSA, both for Kelly and Lindtown, I believe, they were kind enough to purchase t-shirts for the staff. So we got some really nice green t-shirts that say "We love our Lindtown kids" on them. And the staff's going to be able to wear those as we come back to school just as a nice welcoming piece for the kids coming back after a long time. And then also to the Green Dragon Foundation, I believe, maybe this evening, that's coming through. But it sounds like their board was willing to approve a purchase of a large outdoor tent for us at Lindtown to set up out on the playground as a protected space for mask breaks outside. So that was very kind of them to consider that and we're very thankful for that. So, Mr. Rule, you can take it away now.
Good evening. Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
All right, great. I'll echo all of the things that the other administrators have said in terms of getting ready for the start of school and the in-service days. In particular, I'd like to thank my secretaries Cindy and Mary for all of their hard work in communicating with parents and as we are updating our rosters as well and balancing our classes. We're going to get those letters out to parents. Some of those have gone out already, others will go out tomorrow. Also want to thank our custodians for all of their hard work, not just in getting the building nice and clean and ready, but also trying to put some final touches on getting ready for the start of school. We're making sure we have some social distancing dots outside in the parent pickup area. So as parents are lining up to come and get their children at the start of school, we've got some social distancing and we're refining our procedures to make that as an efficient process as we can, as we anticipate more parents coming. Also, just want to say how great it is to have some kids back in the building through SAC. It was great to go down there and see some of them and to see the smiles through their masks. But it was, it was great to see kids and we're eagerly anticipating the return of our students to our school as well. So thank you to everybody for their support and I will turn it back over to Dr. Paul Chalk.
All right, thank you all. We will now move on to the select presentations with the board's permission because we have a couple guests joining us this evening for the Siemens report on recirculation rates. The board's okay with that just as a courtesy that they're not having to sit through our whole meeting. If the board's okay with that, I'll move that up into the select presentations section. We can kind of shuffle things around up here a little bit. So if that's okay with the board, I will go ahead and turn it over and we will have that information presented to us.
Dr. Paul Chalk.
So our first item that we have here with board information, this is a Siemens report and we have our joint today by representatives from Siemens on to be able to answer. First, present us with some information regarding our air exchange rates and all of the schools we had asked them to do a study. And I know they work with the technicians to see how we can maximize the air exchange rates with the current machinery that we have. And they're going to be able to provide us with some information regarding that.
Rogue, are you there? Can you hear us?
Yes, we can. Can you hear me, John?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you very much. I thank the board again for allowing us to present here. My name once again is Rogue Williamson. I'm the account manager associated with Lewisburg Area School District. In accord with our last meeting, we went ahead and started to do some calculations and tabulations regarding the recirculation rates in some of our school districts. By and far, to complete our analysis, we would need some more detailed specs, particularly square footage on some of the buildings, particularly the rooms and so on and so forth. But by and far, based on the information we have, most of your air recirculation rates are those similar to what's at Kelly. So you're looking at the, you know, obviously on an average, some have less and some have more, about six to seven, eight refresh in an hour. Well, the larger problems that we started to come into contact with was the fact that in discussing some of the options about increasing the dampers or opening the dampers more to allow more airflow, more air exchange rates through all of the systems, we came to the conclusion that there are some associated risks with that. Now, by and far, you can do that. The systems that are, the control systems available are Siemens systems. So we can set everything up and essentially give you one-button technology to say, okay, we want to open these all up in all the buildings at one time to allow more air refresh rate in. And that's definitely a possibility. What you need to consider, take in consideration, aside from the high school, is the fact that in the shoulder seasons, which we're in right now, specifically like on a day like today, if you open up the dampers more to allow more air in, you're going to be allowing in a lot more hot, unconditioned air, which is going to introduce obviously a more, less favorable environment to the occupants of the rooms in addition to bringing in additional outside humidity issues as well. Secondarily, the converse to that is as well too, is after we flip past October 15th, when we're mandated to turn on the heat, keeping the dampeners open wider, you're allowing cooler air in, which is going to make the unit run more and harder to heat it. And again, it's going to create a comfort issue. We almost assuredly know that. In addition to the fact that in the wintertime, when it's really cold, you run the risk of bringing in cold outside air, especially in Univents, where you can freeze the coils and pop the lines, which is going to be a considerable amount of damage. I can tell you from experience in my past life, the PSBA, working in the insurance services, that this same event happened at Harrisburg Area School District with 15 Univents and it was a sizable insurance loss. But the option is there. If you guys would like to open up the air vents more, we can do it. It can be done relatively easily. It's not something that we highly recommend though. You know, some of your implements or some of your facilities are, you know, over 60 years old. So you're going to be added stress on some of these units and some of these units parts are already hard to find. So you do risk a potential for some failure issues coming through that. You know, it's still a recommendation that, you know, your airflow recirculation rates are still on par. You still are in code compliant. I know there's some other recommendations along with COVID. But right now, based on your systems in play at the three buildings, aside from the high school, you know, an alternative method like we proposed earlier, it seems to be the best and likely choice if the district wants to improve the air quality within the building. Obviously, there's other things that are coming into play. This is a, you know, a revolving door, as we know, because the mandates are changing all the time. We have already heard of some schools already shutting down and whatnot. So we know you have a lot to contemplate and we're here to offer our expertise and address any questions that you all may have. I do have with me tonight, Mr. Stephen Nyman, who's really led the investigation into the facilities at your district in addition to our Mid-Atlantic Energy Manager or Engineering Manager, Brian Pallavita. So with that, I'll open the floor to any questions that you all may have so we can address your questions, issues, or concerns.
Dr. Jablonski was asking where the six to eight air exchanges come from. I'm not sure why that mic's not picking up, but and is that different than what we had previously or was there a different calculation done or?
No, that was the average refresh rate. And as we, as we, you guys kind of looked at through the, in the last board meeting, you know, some of the rooms had fewer, some of them had more. That was just an average. So there are some rooms that have less air recirculation rates than others and that does pose an issue in some areas as well. But that was just an average I was speaking to. We can bring up the prior document if you would like us to, to review that again. But really, when we started digging into the components and trying to figure out the additional air recirculation rates, it really came to our attention that we should really bring to the forefront the fact that while this can be done, you know, you're going to, you're going to bring in a significant comfort issue on those days when it's more hot than not. You know, on the days where it's colder, you essentially, you know, you're running it with free air, you know, you're, you know, it's a equal balance out. But there's going to be some instances where, you know, it's going to be hotter, you're going to bring in air. It's going to make the building really uncomfortable, especially if everything open, very wide open. And that's really the point we want to deliberate to. Now, we can continue, we're happy to do so, to get pinpoint specific data for all the remaining buildings. We could probably do that in relatively due course. But we just want to bring the initial concerns to the board's attention right now before we move forward down that road.
At the risk of exposing my complete ignorance on these topics, is it an all or nothing thing where you have to have it open also? Can't you do it by season? And wouldn't that change, like when it's like comfortably cool, wouldn't it make sense to up or open the dampers more? Sort of like we do with stove or?
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, you're 100% correct, you know, but, you know, if you come into, but you're going to be getting to the process of opening, closing, opening, closing. Someone's going to have to, you know, you're going to have to make sure the facility staff is on tune with that. You're going to have to be, you know, calculating, you know, the potential weather issues. You know, you could have a heat wave where it might not make sense to keep them all open because you're going to be bringing a lot of humid, hot air. But on those days when it's cool, absolutely, you can open it up as much as you like to bring in more air flows to the, to the building. But we just caution that, you know, your, your systems are significantly older. They, they've run their course, their lifecycle. And, you know, you're increasing use, it could add to more wear and tear. And that's the only thing we would like to, you know, point out as well too.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, some of the Univents are 60 years old. Yep.
Some of the units in the middle school date back to 1960.
Can O2 Prime go onto a 60-year-old unit?
I believe it can, but I would ask Steve or Brian to chime in to verify that for me.
Yes, yes, this is Steve Nyman. Yes, the O2 Prime can be implemented onto the older units. The age of the unit doesn't really change the physicality of how the unit is designed from, say, something that's only 20 or 30 years older. There might be some slight variation, but to simply answer your question, yes, it can be installed on a 60-year-old unit.
Is there any other questions we could address for you?
Do we have a mandate or a requirement to alter what our current recirculation rates are?
There's, there's been suggestions put out in response to COVID. But obviously, they're just, they're suggestions. There's no official mandate or code mandate from any, I believe it's ASHRAE that controls those. And Brian can speak to that a little bit as well too. But yeah, we, there's only mandates or suggestions. There's no mandate, there's only suggestions to our knowledge right now. Brian, could you explain a little about the ASHRAE requirements?
So ASHRAE has requirements for any time there's an airborne pathogen. So it's a hospital or whatever and they were, they suggest that you would increase ventilation rates and increase filtration. We already talked about how increasing the filtration, these older units is difficult, if not impossible to do because of the size of the existing filters. But that is what ASHRAE suggests, but it is not a mandate by any means. Right now, your systems are meeting code.
What is the ASHRAE recommendation regarding the air changes per hour?
I'm not aware of a specific number. It's just, they just suggest to increase it above the traditional or not the traditional. They, the ASHRAE has a defined amount that they want you to do when, with an occupied space. There's a calculation goes into how many people and what, how big the space is. You would do that calculation. So again, and that's what the code suggests. ASHRAE just suggests in a, in a, with an airborne pathogen that you increase that ventilation rate as much as possible.
Brian, I think she was asking what the current rates are. Was that the question correctly? It was hard to hear.
No, I'm just wondering if there's, if they recommend a certain rate per hour.
Right, no, there was, there's no number for, for that. It's just as much as possible. And it does change, you know, again, you can, you can bring in more fresh air in nice weather than you should in hot and cold weather, right? So.
If occupancy of the building is reduced, does that work towards that same goal or is it apples and oranges?
Technically, we'd need less ventilation air with less occupancy to meet the minimum code.
Board, any other questions? This is just for our information this evening. We have no action to take on this tonight. So if there's no other questions or comments, I would thank all of our guests for joining us this evening and thank you for the information. Before I let you guys go. uh, the next item, uh, the Hepburn filter is nothing has changed. That was all information carried from our information last time, correct?
Yep, yep.
Before I, I don't want to skip over that if there were any.
No, no. Yep, that's separate from Simmons, so.
All right, so I will, uh, thank you gentlemen for joining us this evening and we will move on to our learning management system presentation.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, this presentation is also available to the public, um, where they would be able to, um, click on the various links that are available, and I'll just begin just so the public knows that that's possible for them to do. So want to begin by talking a little bit about virtual instruction as we shifted to it in March, as opposed to what virtual instruction would look like should we need to move to it during this school year. Um, last spring, PDE's direction for continuity of learning is different than what our direction is going into this school year. So for this school year, we have to take attendance, which also means we have to follow up with any attendance issues. We also have to provide students with grades. Last year, attendance wasn't required. Districts could waive attendance. And, um, as a result, we, we know that, and this was an issue across the Commonwealth, that not all students were participating in the learning that was being offered. Many school districts went to a pass fail or something along those lines. That, that changed the participation rate, let's say, of, of students in that environment. We were using Google Classroom and some other tools, but one of the concerns that we've heard from parents and also from teachers was the lack of consistency in which, what's being used. And, um, so students might have to log into a number of different programs. And while they were using that here and there in the classroom, when that was the only way that they could get their instruction, that was a little bit, um, challenging for them and also for the teachers. There was a long time since we really had professional development around any of the tools that were in use as well. So some teachers use them more robustly as part of their instruction, others did not. Um, our business model is in-person instruction. So there wasn't really a standard set for what that would look like. And, um, certainly what we did have was incentivizing with other systems. So we've already moved forward in a couple of areas with clever, which would be a single sign-on, which would give a student and a teacher one, um, login and they would access all of your different programs. So going into this year, we, um, we know that we have to make some changes because if we go to virtual instruction, requirements are much different. And outside of the requirements, we have to do what's right for kids and what's best for kids. They can't afford to learn, lose a month or multiple months of their instruction. And, um, we know that there are many issues that will occur for them academically. And we also know that we have to provide opportunities for them to interact with one another, um, for, for their own social and emotional wellbeing as well. So, um, Canvas is the system that we're looking to implement. What we're doing with this currently is district-wide professional development. And along with that would be some expectations for its use and synchronization with Power School and other instructional tools. So what's important to know is that as students are doing their work in Canvas, one of the things that both the parents will be able to see the assignments and also be able to see the grades. And the grades will move right over to Power School. So that's very important. So that it reduces the amount of double work the teachers would do. They will start to scale that up. They'll learn the basics in the beginning, but as we're moving along, they will certainly become more expert with, um, all of the different features of Canvas, which also integrates with Google Classroom and a number of other instructional tools that we're using. So teachers don't have to abandon what they currently have. They just simply have to move it over into their Canvas pages and modules. The student's experience is going to be much different. And again, I spoke a little bit about the parents, that they would be able to see what the students are actually doing and to be able to see their grades. Um, students will have things organized in such a way that they can take tests, they can do their assignments and all of that's all in one spot. So it will be easier for them. We won't have issues of somebody not finding it or the email getting buried or whatever the issues might have been in the past. This is really going to diminish those issues. So, um, you know, why we're going with Canvas here, I don't know if John, um, if you can scroll up one. Maybe we can just at least hit the students', um, link there and you'll, you'll have, have an opportunity to see what students will say.
You want me to play the video? Okay.
It's a short one.
In this video, you will learn about your Canvas dashboard and global navigation links. You'll also learn about navigating a course and accessing assignments. When you log into Canvas, the first thing you see is the dashboard. It provides a high-level overview of your current courses. You may be able to select from three different viewing options. Card view displays a course card for each of your favorite courses. Each card can include clickable icons for assignments, announcements, discussions and files. List view displays all course to-do items in an agenda view to help you easily manage tasks across all of your courses. List view opens to the current date. You can scroll up and down on the page to view past or future items. The last dashboard view is recent activity, which displays a stream of recent notifications from all your courses, including announcements, conversations, assignments, discussions and peer reviews. Canvas displays a global navigation menu that gives you direct access to your courses and other areas of Canvas. From the account link, you can modify your user settings, specify your notification preferences, upload personal files, manage e-portfolios and log out of Canvas. Click the dashboard link to return to the Canvas dashboard at any time. Click the courses link to quickly access your favorite courses and to view a list of all your courses. Click the groups link to access any current groups in which you are enrolled or to view a list of all your groups. Click the calendar link to view your personal calendar and course calendars. Click the inbox link to view and send conversations to your instructors and peers within Canvas. And finally, click the help link to access help resources for your institution. Now let's take a look at the course interface. Click the courses link and then click the name of the course you want to visit. Canvas automatically opens courses to the course homepage set by your instructor. The course interface consists of four main components. Course content displays in the content area. You can use the course navigation links, breadcrumb navigation or the sidebar to navigate to different areas of the course. The course homepage sidebar includes a to-do list displaying items that you need to do in your course. You can click any assignment name to view the assignment. And to submit the assignment, click the submit assignment button. Return to the course homepage by clicking the home link in course navigation or the course name in breadcrumb navigation. If your course includes student groups, you can view a list of your groups in course groups. Click the group name to view the group homepage. You can view recent assignment feedback in recent feedback. Click the assignment name and view feedback in the submission details page. You may be able to view your course grades by clicking the grades link in course navigation. You can also access the course grades page from the course card and recent activity dashboard. Click the view grades button and click the course name. The grades page displays your current course grade and a clickable list of all the courses graded assignments and assignment details. You've now completed this Canvas overview video for students. For additional information on this or any other topic about Canvas, please visit guides.candvslms.com. You can also ask questions and engage with other Canvas users by visiting community.candvslms.com.
So, um, there's also a tutorial for parents view and also teachers view. Parents could be able to see much of what the students are doing as well in Canvas. We think it's really important that the parents as partners in their children's education, should this happen, should have that same access to know what your students are being asked to do and to also help support them should they need to do that. Um, one of the things that we know is that synchronous learning is the best way we will deliver this instruction where the class can be, although virtually, as a group and, um, receive, um, direct instruction from the teacher, but also allow for the students to work in collaborative groups, which can be supported by Canvas and also by the breakout rooms and Zoom. So beyond this pandemic and the need to go virtually, we know that a tool like this will help, um, our teachers develop content and activities where students will be able to create and extend their learning either independently or cooperatively to do new things with that, to take what they've learned and to use their creativity and their imagination in order to apply it to new settings. And it, and so far as this being an investment for right now, we do see this as a useful investment in the future as well. Um, so finally, we have here what Canvas's, um, pricing is. Now, please understand that the pricing for this year also includes the implementation and integration package as well as the online training and tech support. There's a tremendous amount of online training, um, that occurs with Canvas. They can't do in-person, but they pretty much have everything that you need also online. We, um, are using more of a teacher-led, um, model for this. So our folks that are already adept or have used Canvas in some other settings would be those go-to people amongst our faculty to be able to provide them with, um, even some support for the basics, but also help them understand what those next levels, leveraging the additional features. Um, implementation has been accelerated. I do want to thank, um, Mr. Schrader and Ms. Windinger, as well as everybody who's part of his team in order to prioritize this work and, and really take what we take six weeks and, and compress it into, um, three weeks worth of support. I also want to help, um, have a brief shout out to Ms. Paula Rieger, as well as our other principals who have been very supportive with this. Um, and really just seeing this as not just a tool for right now, but seeing this as a tool for something in the future for us. There are ongoing costs. It's a per license cost of about $5 per student. And, um, so when you think about that and, you know, what the impact can be for students' learning, it's certainly, um, something worth consideration. So then this is just the presentation. This is an action item later on, um, in the agenda.
All right, so with that, uh, we will move on. Do you have any questions before we move on?
Is it, um, it looked like it would be possible for virtual to use this also for clubs or other kinds of extra facilities, is that right?
Yes, yes, yes. They would, they would just need to create a class. And it's, it uses all of the students in the active, um, registry. So you can just reassign them as you need to and it synchronizes every night. So if students move into another class or they withdraw and we get new students, the teachers don't have to manually move them around. It syncs directly with our student information system. So everything that you need pulled from the student information system, it does.
You mentioned it's about $5 a student. Would that be around $10,000?
There's the tech support and online professional development. We still continue to pay for it. We're paying additionally for the implementation package, but, um, in order to get all of the other, the things that you're interviewing.
It looks like it was only for 4 through 12. Are we not considering it through, maybe for the Kelly elementary students?
So there, it is available for students K to 12. We're going to use CSOL with our students in K to 3. And we have CSOL ambassadors who will be also doing the same thing with the Kelly teachers and just synchronizing and providing professional development. And that also will synchronize with Power School. So it, it will have real-time data. Would this system allow us to, um, have work for them on snow days in future years when we're not in this, so they wouldn't be losing those days and having to make them up later? Yeah, flexible instruction days. And also if students are on a trip, whether on a, a family trip or a field trip or if they're out for an extended absence, um, you know, home mount, we may assign a teacher of course for home mount. But if they're out for whatever reason, they're still connected with their class and they can see everything in real time. If they're able to participate, they would be able to do that. Great. Thank you.
All right, so we will move on to our board action items. Uh, they're all business. Uh, the first item is the revised instructional units template. Uh, Dr. Paul, talk.
So the revised instructional template unit, um, instructional time template is required. Um, this is, needs to be posted on our website as, as well as submitted to PDE. This is revised, um, for, for two reasons. First, our dates, our start and end date of the school year has changed. And I have also included in there how instruction would be delivered. I've delineated our plan for in-person instruction, should we move to a hybrid model, um, what that would look like and also to, um, remote instruction. Felt that was important to include in there, um, so that if we need to pivot to either of these models, we can make the administrative recommendation that that's what we will do and it would be retroactively approved by the board. But since they're all here, um, this would just simply be the, um, notification to the board of the need as well as the community that that's what would be, um, required.
So do I have a motion to approve the revised instructional minutes template? By Mrs. Clark, acted by Dr. Jablonsky. Any discussion?
This was the item where I thought we could talk about whether or not sixth graders should be included as they are elementary students?
And I, I, certainly the teachers have expressed the desire for that as well as Mr. Rosen. Um, there'd be some logistics with transportation on that part, but I can believe we have enough time to figure that out. Seeing as though our fifth graders, um, have missed that last part of the school year, which is really important for them in their transition. And every beginning of the school year, the students aren't quite yet in the grade where they are, given the maturity, maturity level of students. Um, so from a standpoint of what's best for instruction and also supervision, I would support extending this to sixth grade as well.
I would also have the sixth graders go on the schedule of their elementary. So we're not running two buses or anything. We're just going to have them all go at the same time.
It's just going to be a capacity thing, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we would still run our tiered system and bus system.
Actually, the very fervent request is if we go K6, that we run the set timing to service all the children who are coming in rather than two-tier.
Yeah. Single tier. Uh, we, we would need some, if, if you're going to do that, please let us know now because Mr. Jones needs all, it needs a lot of time to try and integrate and still keep kids within the, the limits that you prescribed for the buses. So we, we need time.
So the motion that we have, uh, are we good with the addition of the sixth grade?
That's for the hybrid. So maybe coming in for in-person instruction and spread out the building. I, I think we, we want to clarify is right now, we're still in, in-person instruction. Um, if we go to hybrid, we also have to not allow the transportation to include sixth grade. Yeah. So that, that's not work we need immediately, but perhaps sooner than later because we don't know when that change will occur.
And you said, um, George, are you still there?
Yes, I'm here.
What do you think of this idea?
Uh, bringing sixth graders in for in-person, I think it's a wonderful idea. I know the, uh, sixth grade team is behind it. And I think if we do the hybrid approach and we, um, had sixth grade here, we could also still reduce the student density at Lindtown and, and keep fifth graders coming over to the middle school as well. So it would be better to have two grades in a three-grade building than two grades in a two-grade building. So yeah, I'm all for it.
And we can work out those logistics if we, yeah, with enough time before we go hybrid. Yeah.
I hear it. This is too, we are missing something.
It, it'll, it'll be interesting in terms of busing, but if more parents are driving their kids or have opted for the e-school, we may be able to make it work, uh, with a single-tier busing. So fingers crossed. Give us some time, please.
All right, so we have a motion, a second on the table with the minor adjustment. Any other discussion?
One more thing. They, they would be in their new transition grade, so they would come on September 9th, right?
They, they could come on September 9th and that would still remain as game.
They're all in person anyway.
They're in person, right.
Ignore that. I said that. We're all in person.
We are all in person.
All right, so, uh, roll call vote, please, Paula. All right. So roll call vote, please. Paula?
Dr. Unziger Fesseroe?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Brows?
Yes, yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jabonski?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. Board members, this is a reminder, especially with the masks being on with muffling, if we could just remember to speak up for the folks joining us. Our next item is the revised health and safety plan. Dr. Paula, talk back to you.
So this incorporated the recommendations. This had a provisional approval based on recommendations that were suggested on the floor. They've been incorporated. We've also changed a couple of other things. First and foremost, the governor's issue about masking on July 1, there was a revision to that in terms of how that applies to school districts. That's posted on the Department of Health's webpage. It hasn't been changed in the order officially, but the EpiQ does include that. So students would be wearing masks all the time, with the exception of when they're eating and drinking and they're seated, they're six feet apart, and they're taking a designated mask break. The elimination of if students are seated six feet apart, let's say in classroom, they cannot remove their masks. I think that's a very wise addition to have there is that's not left to any one person's discretion. It won't create confusion with a teacher that maybe is able to do that because there's fewer kids in the class or if the teacher deems that more appropriate. It keeps it out of, well, we can do that in Mrs. Jones's class, but not Mr. Smith's class. I think that eliminates a lot of unnecessary hassle in this really trying time. I think it also preserves the safety of the students and the staff because, you know, the less droplets could be expelled into the air, the less likely it will be that people will become ill, not just of COVID-19, but other airborne pathogens, such as the cold and regular flu that comes around later in the fall. The other change is based on the August 13th guidance that we received, which takes the, which takes our ranking or rating as either low, moderate, or substantial. And depending upon the number of COVID cases amongst students or staff, it is then recommended through contact with the Department of Health on the number of days that might need to be quarantined, either in the building or in the school district. It's not possible yet to say exactly how long all of that would happen as everybody's, right, ranking as low, substantial, moderate may change, and that's always fluid. So that is on a week-to-week basis, or actually bi-weekly basis, if you hold steady in that ranking. So we did want to incorporate that language into the plan. And certainly, our nurses are working with what their protocols will be regarding any quarantining or isolation, maybe quarantine is isolating students if they're COVID-suspected and the cleaning that would need to occur after that. And, you know, happy to say that the Union County Office of Public Safety was able to supply us with N95 masks. So should there be that case, the nurses and the custodians, who would be closest to that contact at that time, would have that additional level of protection. And we want to make sure that everybody's kept safe. But the biggest and strongest thing is really just to stay home if you're not feeling well and for parents to make sure that they're doing their health and safety checks with their students every day. Are there any other questions?
This includes that we purchase the HEPA filter servicing room, which is later on in the agenda?
Yes.
So that is on our agenda. That is under board information. So we are, that is just a...
It's information, but if the board wishes to take action, they can.
I remain a little bit confused, I guess, about the interaction between this health and safety plan and the guidelines regarding our current designation as substantial.
So I can share with the board that on a call this past Monday with the superintendents and CTC director of Union County, we had a call at 4:00 in the afternoon with the Department of Health and the Department of Education. While we remain in substantial, the Department of Education could support school district moving to a hybrid because our numbers are starting to recover. We're starting to see that the spike that we had, those individuals are now moving 14 days out for their time of testing positive, meaning that they're either recovered, but no longer contagious. And if we would continue on that positive trajectory and we still have data to receive on August 31st, certainly we'd want to have a decision by that Monday because people would need to prepare if anything were to be any different. That, you know, we could, if it looks as though we're going back up or we do need to look at something else, but if everything is still staying steady, then if we wanted to shift to a hybrid, we could. I would just ask for the consideration of the board and the community that having the students come in those first three days would be really important. First of all, they're coming in at a stagnant start. So we won't have for two of those days, every student in the building. And then they'll only be together for one day. This provides us the opportunity to issue the devices to the students, also to provide the students with the expectations and train them on some of the new tools that they'll be using. It's very concerning for administrators and for teachers to have to begin remotely before they've even met the students face-to-face. Now, of course, this would only be if we're in safe conditions. If it's, if all of a sudden we have 400 cases in the next day or two, then of course we have to reconsider that plan. But it's important to keep in mind, too, that the data's reported for Union County. And while there is data, that is zip code data, we don't know how many active cases are actually right here within our zip codes that are the catchment area of our schools.
So do I understand correctly that we're basically still waiting to see what the numbers do? So in approving, or not approving, but in approving this health and safety plan, we're not making a final decision? Should the numbers go down or up, that would obviously be taken as your advice.
So if we look at page four, because the board approves this, there's total reopening, but we do have some families doing distance learning. And we actually have homebound blended as well. We have about 25% of our students participating in either homebound or our e-school. Close to a little bit over 20%, and somewhere around 4% or so of homebound students. That are non-traditional homebound students. These are students that are only doing homebound this year with their parents as a result of COVID. We don't anticipate that they would stay that way afterwards. We don't have our total number of students that are selecting some other option, whether it be a private school or charter school or cyber-charter school. We'll only know that once we get the withdrawal requests. So scaffolding reopening is a little bit different because it's some in-person while some people are doing distance. And that's kind of where we can get into this semantics of, given the fact that only 75% of our students are expected to be in school, if those 25% are doing something else, are we only opening for some and not all? Then, of course, we get to blended where we're balancing in-person and remote. And that's where an example is of alternating days in a week. I would really ask the board to consider that in terms of, we have an AB schedule at the high school. So if we get into alternating days, we will effectively reduce students' time in a class by not 50%, but it could even be 25% or less. That would have to necessitate a complete reconfiguration of the high school schedule. Ms. Reber and Mr. Wetzel have already made an accommodation with the schedule by just having semesters. So there's much less passage and much less interaction with other students, which is a positive thing. So they've already tried to account for some of that in their planning. And total remote, of course, is total remote. So when the board does vote, you're voting on this document. You're voting also on which box is ticked there. So I think that helps to answer the question of where the vote is in terms of how the board's expressing their desire for either in-person, some form of in-person remote, or total remote.
So at this point, I do not have a motion or a second. So I would entertain a motion to approve the revised health and safety plan.
So move.
Move by Mrs. Brows, acted by Mrs. Clark. Any discussion? Erin?
Given that we have great air situation in the high school, according to humans, I don't understand why we're purchasing filtration for this building.
Are you talking the portable HEPA filters? That's actually for the other three buildings. It's not for this building.
So in the document, it says for every instructional classroom, and instructional space in classrooms in the document.
Well, for the high school, and that's part of the other discussion item, is we would be looking at MIR-14 filters, which would be the higher level of filtration for the rooftop units here at the high school to do the equivalent.
I don't need to reword that, though. I mean, I just read very full language.
Okay. It's, I think it's between 10 and 11. Individual classrooms, instructional spaces, and offices will receive portable HEPA filter units or upgraded.
Or upgraded, yeah.
I think that's the language that...
Yeah.
Yeah, between 5 to 10 onto 11. Right. It does talk about, though, the individual classrooms, instructional spaces, and offices will receive portable. So it doesn't imply that it's everywhere. Right. And then we can just put, or upgraded filters.
Or like a trend curve.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So just to go back to the question of the modality of instruction, back on that page four, the six boxes. If we vote, if we pass this with total reopen for all students and staff, with the numbers being what they are now, are we not basically saying that we think it's perfectly safe for all of the children to return to school with the numbers as they stand?
Yes.
Okay. I'm not comfortable with that.
If we use, so it would still be a hybrid mode? If we give it a solid, sort of, recommendation of that?
And again, it's important to distinguish that these are recommendations. I believe that the Department of Education is truly trying to work with the school districts that are in our situation as they recognize the importance of in-person learning. Certainly, you know, we're talking about health and the safety in terms of the pandemic, but, you know, when it comes to the social, emotional wellness of the students, any food insecurities that they may have in how they learn, how that can be delivered, you know, those are other things that as educators we're paying attention to in a broader range of health and safety. But we certainly would not jeopardize students' lives or our faculty's lives. If we look at the number of active cases, and that's really just a calculation based on what we have in the daily items they print every day, the number of cases, we back out the total number of cases and bring it down to just what would be active because cases can be removed as they pass the 14-day mark. But really, I'm estimating, and again, I don't have access to the data to be able to know that definitively, but just doing that calculation based on what's published and available. We have about 66 active cases in the county, just less than 1% of the population. So, you know, we don't ever know what might happen. You know, as we do have Congress at living facilities, we do have a college. But I feel very comfortable with Becknell's aggressive response to any students that might test positive. They've gone the extra measure of quarantining students even off-campus and providing services to them. And they have a pretty robust testing program in place, too. So there, as a community partner, they're really looking to make sure that their kids are doing the right thing as well, too, and not being an agent that affects our operations in the school district. So it's something to consider. I would certainly recommend that if we're moving to moderate, which would be hybrid, it'd be recommended. It looks like we're moving into that direction. We have to stay steady for two weeks, which would take us out to the first full week of school. That's the best thing for us to do at the time. If we can at least get the kids in to do the orientation that we need for the opening of school, that would be important. I'm highly concerned that any by marking period decision, which we are able to do within the guidelines, I'm highly concerned that with the possibility of individuals being out with COVID-like symptoms or any contact that they may have for positive cases, we're going to have a number of people having quarantine, as students as well as staff. And that may be by a school or a district-wide age. And again, it might not be because of anything that they did at school. If this is just what they might have contracted in the community or places of work, that, you know, they were able to bring home. I'm not optimistic about the winter really being, you know, anything that doesn't include the remote for some populations. It's just very hard to tell.
Could we select scaffolding for the reason that we do have 25% of kids out already in their home option of remote? And that is, I mean, I think because we're setting up for, we're able to do that here. But the idea of every child that wants to be in-person, their head now is going to be, particularly for the first three days.
I was going to suggest the same thing. I feel like from where I stand, there are two options that I see. One is what Erin just suggested, that we would take scaffolding reopening, which does categorize what we're already planning to do, but would also categorize the hybrid. And then we would not need to reapprove this document should we need to go to the hybrid. The other alternative would be to table this and schedule a special meeting for next week after we have more numbers. But I know that families want this information. I'm not sure that's an ideal path.
Scaffolding would give us the flexibility to be able to move in and out because we do have 25% of our students already selecting something else besides in-person. The determination of when we're in-person versus the hybrid as we define it, which is K-6 coming in and the secondary students being moved, would be conditional around, you know, just what the spread looks like and what we actually have for student membership and the safe operation of the school, which is already memorialized in our infectious disease policy. I want to make sure I'm saying the name of the policy correctly. But, you know, this has been thought through. If it happened, it's going to be a problem happening. And it also, you know, allows for activities to still continue. Where we can do virtual clubs and activities, I think we really do need to do that and be able to maintain that so the students have those connections.
So Jen, to clarify, scaffolding essentially is a different level of hybrid. It is where you have the K through 5 or K through 6 coming in and the high school remote.
Or it could be all in, too.
It could be what?
They could all be in.
Yeah. Because we know that 25% is already out, so...
Well, actually, scaffolding reads some students are engaged in in-person learning while others are distant learning. I would take that to be occurring at the same time. So you have distance learners and you have in-person learners, which would be a hybrid model. The blended model is where you have people going like every other day, which truly isn't like there.
Right. But I think the scaffolding, the definition that's offered there describes what we're already heading into with what we've been calling in-person, but since 25% of the students are not attempting in-person. So those are the, some students who are engaged in distance learning. It's already happening. It's already happening.
Scaffolding is, scaffolding is available. And I just realized this is staff. This is actually good, too, because we are allowing some remote instruction. So meaning the staff person is not fully in-person, you know what I mean? So I feel like what we're doing is already scaffolding.
Because of the percentages, correct?
Yeah. Because we have 25% of our students selecting remote virtual instruction. They're being provided instruction by our teachers, as well as the Accelerated Ed teachers. And again, it allows us to be fluid. We can be in-person for as long, everybody in-person K-12, for as long as it's safe to do so. And if conditions change and we're just going to bring in our K-6 students, we could do that. And if conditions change and we're just going to bring in our K to 6 students, we could do that with the, the secondary students being remote.
So not changing our plan, we're just rebranding it.
Yeah.
Yes.
So scaffolding then will allow us to bring everybody in and stay if that's the, if we want to.
As long as, as long as it's safe. And if we move back down to low, let's say with our numbers, then that, that's great news. And I would suggest that we're not waiting, we're, you know, the data to come out on Monday, which doesn't come out necessarily at 7 o'clock in the morning either, so it can come out anytime. You know, and, and I can appreciate, you know, that the Department of Health is working as quickly as they can with the resources that they have to get this out. It's just a struggle for school districts and that they have a timeliness to shift to a different plan, prepare the staff, notify the parents, make all of the other arrangements that we need to. It's important to also say that Ms. Moser has some wonderful news from SAC, so if we ever had to go forward remote, we would be able to provide childcare for students ages 5 to 15. So that would be certainly a benefit to our, our parents of younger children, but also some middle school age children that might just need some supervision if the parents are at work.
Mrs. Moser, how many, maybe it's just because I know more of them, because my daughter is brave, but more kids doing the ACE program this year?
Yes, number of ACEs is steadily going up over the last several years.
Is that included in the numbers that are not in-person?
No, so you would add additionally who's at Sun Tech and not in our school. You would add who's at ACE and not in our school. If you're, you know, beginning to look for those other subgroups of kids who aren't physically onsite in the building. Right now, it includes those who are choosing e-school as we were calculating, or those who were blending their homeschool program with not being here full-time. But you're right, those are two other subgroups of specifically seniors that aren't present onsite. So we know that number down of a few more by virtue of those two programs.
And does scaffolding, how does that impact athletics?
It, it doesn't. Athletics is actually dependent of any of these four options.
Really quickly, you just mentioned only, the 25%, only including e-school and the large in-home school. It doesn't include cybercharge or anything?
We don't know those numbers. It's September till typically we learn where those numbers come.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, so then it's, when you're worried about the buses, you're balancing, you know, 100% of the students.
We, we, we have been, yes, we have been adjusting here and there to try and get to the, to the guidelines.
When we're saying 25% of the students aren't here, there are 25% of the students that if there wasn't COVID-19, we would expect them to walk.
Yeah.
Was an additional on top of what we normally would expect for Sun Tech or, or ACE, yes.
No, Sun Tech's not missing, but.
No, no, I'm saying it's an additional on top of that.
But that's more of a buffer, I would say, in terms of the number of students. And of course, we have students who traditionally always help schools with us. So we're not including those students because we didn't expect them to be coming to school.
So those first three days are gonna be super important also to get a true feeling of the numbers. And one of the questions from before the meeting or the beginning of the meeting was, is there an option for a hybrid model where 6 through 12, now what we're talking is maybe 7 through 12, would have some in-person instruction? As we look at the numbers, is there a possibility that if the numbers are low enough and we could have, you know, that, that safety measure, what we're talking about for the hybrid model for the younger kids, there maybe could be some in-person instruction?
I'd have to get more information from both Mr. Drosen and Ms. Reber on that in terms of the schedule. I would not recommend alternating days just because it's inconsistent. You would want to have, and I'm just gonna use the high school as an example, you'd want to have at least two consistent meeting days. I would say like a Monday and a Tuesday, so you can do A day and B day, where that would be in-person. And then Wednesday versus Friday would be remote as an example, or if you wanted to space it out differently. The reason for that being is you want to make sure there's class meetings. So if you're alternating, if the teacher's teaching students in front of them, and students are doing something that's remote instruction, the teacher, when the remote students come in, will reteach that lesson. So you're gonna cover less material, and, and that's a concern in terms of the consistency for the learning for the students. So there could be a way to figure something like that out. And I certainly understand the parents' suggestion and point, because it does put kids face-to-face with one another, and that's really important, and that can be a time that, you know, clubs can be scheduled or something like that as well. But it, it's what days and how to do it, but you'd want fixed days and fixed times because families will need to know how to plan, and the students will too.
The way that I'm reading the difference between total reopen for all students and staff versus scaffolding is that the district is doing something different for scaffolding. And in our current plan that is presented in front of us, it is in whole person. The difference between students not being here is not a district decision that we're doing it online. It's a parental decision for them to be doing online. So for me, there is a big difference between, that's not scaffolding, in my opinion, is not what we're doing. We are being presented with a plan to reopen in person. It's not a, it's not a district decision, it's a parental decision.
But if you decide to provide teachers through e-school, so we did decide to provide annual instruction.
And I think that they're very, I appreciate what you're saying, but I think that they're really bundled together because my own sense of the ways in which the, the safety measures that have been described to us for the school buildings are indeed safe has to do with the fact that there will be fewer students in the building. So I, I do think that we've been able to develop this plan in part because of this 25% of people who have elected not to come in person. So it may have begun as their choice, but then that choice became part of the district's plan.
Sure, but we're still going in-person. I mean, I guess, I guess I'm not seeing that.
I guess, but I feel like the scaffolding reopening, right, some students are engaged in in-person learning while others are distance learning. That is what it says, literally. So that will be true. On September 9th, all of the people who are currently planning to be in-person will show up and be in-person.
Right, but it's also true that total reopen for all students and staff, but for some students and families opt for distance learning, which is also, I mean.
Same.
Right, I mean, I guess they.
It's like the same thing, they're, they're being titty and about words.
So are we being transparent to the community if we rebrand it to scaffolding? Are we being transparent to the community with our intent to bring students back for a total reopen?
I mean, if we choose total reopen and the numbers don't go down, then we need to come back next week and vote on this again. And, and maybe that goes differently.
But I think at that point, that gives us the opportunity to discuss it as a board.
Of what I'm explaining.
With what are, with the direction that we want to go. If that makes sense. I mean, I personally, I would rather come back and discuss it as a board with the direction in which we want to go, rather than just vote now for either or, and not really have that discussion as a board. Just me personally.
But if they're the same thing, and they, if they're the same thing, and it gives us, I just, I don't see the difference.
I think there is a difference though. I think the difference is, in the first one, we're saying we're coming back in-person. The second one says, we might not come back in-person. We might have more of a hybrid model. That, that is how I'm reading it. I, I, I'm struggling with the difference between the two of them and, and trying to fully wrap my head around it. I, I understand needing to have that flexibility, but I, I would, I would prefer with that flexibility to come back to the table if we need to and not have it built into this, if that makes sense. Like, I would rather have that conversation. If we're, if we're looking to go hybrid at some point, I want to sit at the table and have that conversation and not just have it happen. I want to. So I would prefer to go with a full reopen, and if we decide we have to go hybrid, then we come back to the table. We decide that as a board and not, and not have it. I, I don't like to have the flexibility, if that makes sense.
So are you, I don't mean to put words to your mouth, are you concerned that the scaffolding just puts us right into hybrid?
Yes.
Without, okay, I see what you're worried about.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
And I, I just wanna, I wanna throw this out there. I don't know, I spend a lot of time on the Department of Health website, and I just want to call attention to some of the wording, as in their reopening for schools guidelines. And it says if there are fewer than 10 cases reported in a county for the most recent seven-day reporting period, the county will automatically qualify as exhibiting a low level for community transmission, which would immediately allow us to be in-person. For this week, currently, we have five. And so by Monday, we literally could be considered low and eligible for, automatically eligible according to their guidelines, automatically eligible for in-person. I, I, while I understand the need to have some flexibility, I'm not opposed to flexibility. I just don't like flexibility in the policy. I want to be able to come back to the table.
I guess the question then is, what would, what would trigger hybrid in this district? Would we use the guidance that's provided by the Department of Health, or would we select our own?
So this is where it gets very gray for school districts, because they're just recommending based on the designation that they're giving us, and that's the number of cases in the county of 100,000. We're, we're always going to be at a disadvantage because we're, our county only has 44,000 people in it. So it doesn't take many cases, or does it take the situation we had earlier in the month where most of the cases, despite who's due to congregant living facility, with people who, while I get the employees may live in the community, they may live in other communities as well, but these individuals aren't living, leading that facility. So it really comes down to us deciding if we want to take the recommendation. But we may not see a prudent additional information, data, trying to get more specific data about how many active cases we have and figuring out the nature of those cases in our catchment zone. So, you know, not that what's going on to the west of us doesn't matter, but we don't need to consider if there's a spike in cases, let's say, to the west because that might not affect our students. And it is very difficult to make that determination. And we do see the numbers going down. I'm concerned that we don't, it's not broken out by the number of active cases that needs school leaders to have to access that information. Much of it is confidential information that I wouldn't have access to naturally. I would need to seek that out, and so I've been trying to calculate that out myself to, to see so we can make a reasonable decision at the time. So we do not have to take the recommendations, for sure. They're considering it, but you have to also consider the metrics that they're using to develop those recommendations.
I would just have two questions then. When and how can we get that drill-down data? And in addition to that, just from the medical expertise, and we talked about this a little bit, getting our experts that have been consulting with that with you and the administrative team sort of addressing this for us as well, and for our families, so that they're feeling comfortable about the decision.
I think it would be wise, because our experts have a pulse on the actual data and as to where it is, that depending on the recommendation, they can look at the actual data and say, if you want to follow the guidelines, that's a really good idea given what we're seeing in terms of caseload. Or it's maybe not necessarily located in this area, or as, as I've explained, they don't back out the cases that are no longer active. I don't know that they'll tell us the actual numbers, as they cannot share that publicly because of confidentiality reasons. I've asked the Department of Health in our meeting this past Monday, can the school district superintendent be afforded the same ability to get access to that information, understanding that people that would work in any emergency management or healthcare fields, they need that to make decisions so that they can be prepared to treat the patients appropriately and have the appropriate PPA and protocols in place. School superintendents are being asked to make decisions for thousands of children and their families, and, and we're just being given the guidelines. And I don't think it's unreasonable, and I hope they do take that into consideration. They're gonna take that back and, and see what can be done to help us with that. I don't know. I haven't heard yes or no. The best thing I can do is just calculate what's published in the paper. And, and again, it's published a day later than the actual cases, which you can understand. But, you know, it's, you know, hopefully is they're getting the data, and I don't know how they're, they're getting it. But it seems to track pretty closely with what is able to be shared, because I can't share that publicly.
And what you're looking for is zip code data. And, and when, and when they were tested positive. So that you have an idea about the 14-day period, which unless they're in the hospital is, is a fair estimate of how long they're.
Well, that's like the hospital, not everybody tests.
Right, that's what I'm saying, like, must be hard.
So it takes 10 days past a positive test, I'm not sure. You're contagious, I believe it's two or three days to 10 days, that's your period that you would need to quarantine because if you could have tested symptoms with a negative test, it's 14 days.
Thanks. I mean, you, you've expressed very articulately, you know, how frustrating it is to not have that more detailed data, and I completely share that frustration. But, and, and I, and I just want to say sort of for the record that there is not one tiny part of me that questions the benefit of in-person education. Of course, I want that for our children in our district. But with the information that we have right now, I'm not comfortable voting for total reopen. I'm hopeful that we'll get information that would make me feel comfortable with that. But if I have to vote on this right now, the, the information that we actually have, which is imperfect information, leaves me feeling like I have no alternative.
So just so I understand, would you be more comfortable with the scaffolding, scaffolding reopening there? I mean, is that a difference that?
I, I would be, but I, I kind of agree with Lisa that it's, there's a problematic flexibility there. I mean, honestly, the reason I'm comfortable with this is because I can sort of tell myself I'm voting for the hybrid. But if you're telling yourself you're voting for a person, right, that's, that's a game we don't want to play with our community yet.
And I think that we can always call a special meeting to come back. And as I said before, personally, I like that we can have these discussions if we know more, if we have. But that just gives us the, the option to call a special meeting for that next week. But I, I just wanted to clarify, again, just from my understanding, would the board's that, if that's, you know, if that was a difference if we were trying?
I think the question on the table is that if we're not in substantial anymore and are able to open, where are we opening?
Well, I think we're going on that assumption, right? And if things go south.
Right, then we have to reach in and make the next decision.
Correct.
Can we also talk about the fact, just, I, I understand we have different perspectives and to some extent, we're talking semantics. The larger issue is parental choice. I, I think we need to make a choice that allows parents to do what they believe is best. We know that there are parents, that there are opinions on all sides of this issue. There are a number, there are a number of parents who feel as strongly that their kids should be back in the building as, just, just like there are parents who feel like it may be unsafe. I think we should make a decision that allows parents to make their informed choice. And those that don't want to come, they have their options, they have, they can, they can do what, do what they feel is best for their family. We should allow those that want their kids to come to the building to make that decision as long as we possibly can.
We're also making that decision for our staff and faculty, and they don't really have a choice. If we say school's happening in-person, show up and teach, right? It's one thing for the families to have that choice, it's another thing for the people who work here.
Let, let me clarify, all staff will report unless we're in a stay-at-home order. The teachers will be teaching from their classrooms.
But they'll be teaching from empty classrooms, because it's dangerous here.
The clarity of the position is significant to me. And we've all discussed subtle nuances of language over and over again. An instruction from the top, and the middle, and from the bottom is very confusing to everybody. Trying to release to the general public, no, 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 this is scaffolding, not in-person, like we talked about before. And here are the subtle nuances of scaffolding learning that we haven't ever discussed, but here's how it's different. Just seems like as another layer of confusion. Coming back to discuss it again next week is not a deterrent factor for me. Coming back to discuss next week might be what we should actually do. Coming back to discuss next week might be what we should actually do. So a vote for convenience, doesn't carry water. A vote that lets people know what to anticipate, clear direction. That's going to be more significant for me. So I might vote for the, for open as is tracked on the plan. How do we seem to communicate most clearly to everyone?
I think I was most aligned with John's position in concession. It's just easier for people to plan for the reopen, I'd say that will be planned. But I completely agree, I hope we can amend this to say, approval with the concession that we will return when we have data one week around, because then we will be one more week before the first day of recording for the reopen. So is that something we can do? Can we say we can go for this with the idea that we will be with it regardless of the number of cases? Up down, left, right, to make the final decision?
And isn't that what we're going to be doing all the time anyway? Like, are we going to be, like, are you going to have to pretty consistently handle what's happening, have to revisit, say, okay, where are we at this time? And what does that look like? You know, for me, when I knew we had the extra, what was three weeks or whatever it was at the time, I honestly was like, okay, that gives us until literally, right before school starts, right? To hoping, to hoping that the numbers will be going down. So for me, I was like, hey, we're thinking in person. We're thinking in person the whole way until we get to a point that says we can't be in person. So no matter what we call it, that's sort of how I had it in my head. As long as we're able to call it when it happens. And really, and again, the numbers are so important and what the numbers look like and what they actually mean.
I have to agree with Cory too, because if you give a plan, it's still, we're not taking the option away from parents that feel uncomfortable. There's that option.
Yeah.
To even have synchronous teaching. So I, I can only support opening in-person.
I, I'm for revisiting this, so don't get me wrong. I don't want to build it into the plan because I do want to have, I want to have the faith in our administrative team and pull and track that if, if they believe that we need to come back and look at hybrid, that they'll call us back to come back and look at hybrid. And that could be next week, if the numbers come out Monday and they're like, oh, my gosh, this is horrible. And they say, we really need to get back together and have a special session on this. I think that's fine, but I don't necessarily want to build it into our vote that we will. Because I mean, literally, they could come be coming back every week, once a week, twice a week, sometimes a week.
And then you have decisions, ticked out, right? Once a year, three years, a transition every.
Well, and I would say that if all of a sudden the conditions deteriorate dramatically and we would need to move to a hybrid or remote immediately, the board will meet, I don't have to wait for the meeting to do it. I will take actions to keep everybody safe immediately. You would be informed and we would retroact if it all happened. If we ended up with 1,000 cases tomorrow, you know, or the day before school starts or something like that, we need to, I'm basically. It's not very many numbers, right? It's unfortunate, which makes it, it makes it tougher for many of the, you know, counties that are rural where you have fewer people living in the county.
I have to agree with Cory and Tara. I think we need to get these kiddos back in. And I really, again, am saying I'm questioning the validity of these tests. I just heard today, and this is a true story, because the lady that told me, talked to the family involved. It was an Amish family who lost a child by drowning. And the doctor put on the death certificate that it was COVID. And they fought it. They went back to the doctor and said, my child did not have COVID. He died of drowning. And the doctor said, if I don't put COVID down, I'll lose my job. Now, that's a true story. So there again, I'm thinking after November, this is all gonna, not go away, but a lot of this, these numbers situations are going to go away. And I, I'm also in agreeance with, with Jordan. I think we need to go with a plan of getting these kids back in full time with the half-day on Wednesday. And if we need to do a hybrid, have a special meeting to discuss it. I don't want to lock it into this, this motion.
I think the most transparent, as a board, the most transparent option to convey to the community is the total reopen. If I were a parent who might not have been necessarily following every meeting and hearing all of these discussions, to suddenly see the scaffolded with the example there in writing that some grades, some grade levels in person, other grade levels, remote learning, you know, we might cause some panic that, wait a minute, is that, you know, this is the first time I'm caring about it. I think it's the most transparent to our community to convey what we're, what we're intending. Any other discussion?
I'm just going to say one more time that I, I really want our kids to learn in person. But the data that they have suggests that that was not a good idea. Have to vote on this now with that data in front of me. I cannot support this. I hope the data changes.
Then you vote no, Virginia.
I know. I just want to be very plain.
I hear you.
Board, any other discussion? All right. So I have a roll, a motion, a second, a roll call vote, please call it.
Dr. Zimmerman?
No.
Mrs. Brousse?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unzinger Fessero?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, moving on to the next action item. We have the additional curriculum resources.
Yes, you have the titles, the lists in front of you from previous meeting. Ask that we vote to approve those this evening.
Moved by Dr. Zimmerman, seconded by Mrs. Clark. Any discussion? Hearing done, roll call vote, please call it.
Mrs. Brousse?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unzinger Fessero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, the next item is the 2020, 2021 Parents Do Not Elect Online Campus.
Dr. Palichuk. So as I shared in the last meeting, we're moving the handbook onto a website so that the common information that would be consistent, such as family trips, discrimination, things of that nature that are K-12 universal, will have common language with specific links to pages that are school-specific. So how you would handle school bags or in-school procedures would be there. So we're still in the process of putting that together. Unfortunately, I do not have that ready here for vote this evening. But I can share with you that the schools all do have their COVID-specific plans. They'll be sharing those out Monday to families. So students have them, they're written in student-friendly language as well. So students know what to expect. And that has a lot to do with masking, with social distancing. Much of the procedure changes from the normal routine that students are used to, they'll have to be familiar with and also practice and use in areas of schools. So of course, all of that will be reviewed with the students when they return, but to give them the opportunity to see that ahead of time so that they can start to visualize that. So this, I would request that we table this and move it forward. Those school-specific guidelines will go out to the parents on Monday. And we'll also post them on our returning to school page that we have on our website so that it can be always accessed there if somebody's unable to get it.
Motion to be pulled.
All right, so we have a motion to second table this until our next meeting. Any discussion?
Are we also publishing in Spanish on Monday?
We can have translated into Spanish.
Okay.
Yeah.
All in favor of tableing, say aye.
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 Any votes? All right, so we will table that topic until our next meeting. Moving into the new business under Board Action. First item is the Canvas Learning Management System that Dr. Palichuk presented earlier in the meeting. I would entertain a motion to approve the purchase of a Canvas Learning Management System.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Zimmerman, seconded by Mrs. Brousse. Any discussion? All right, roll call vote, please call it.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unzinger Fessero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Brousse?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, our next item is the Seesaw Elementary Learning Management System. Dr. Palichuk referred to it earlier in the discussion with Canvas. Anything you want to add?
This does not look like a traditional code because of the time of posting. We did not have the traditional.
I hear a motion to approve.
Information where it's in exactly the same.
Moved by Dr. Jablonsky, seconded by Dr. Zimmerman. Any discussion? Hearing done, roll call vote, please call it.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unzinger Fessero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Brousse?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, the next item is the Zoom teacher licenses. Dr. Palichuk.
So we've talked about having the webinar-level licenses, much like we do for our school board meetings, where the teacher would have the same ability to use classroom management virtually as they would within the, in the classroom for in-person learning. For this, we learned that there's a different level that's in between. And you can see the crosswalk that is side-by-side there of the features. And that's in the hyperlink between the webinar licenses, like as we're using right now, the district has one of those. And the one that's called John, it's Mr. Fairchild, it's called Meeting.
Yes, Zoom Meetings.
So they're able to pretty much do Zoom meetings for much less than the webinar. So we would, we're offering both to you, but we certainly would recommend that you select the price of $7,500.
Yes.
Move to Zoom Meetings.
Second.
So we have the motion to approve the Zoom Meetings. Moved by Dr. Jablonsky, seconded by Ms. Stanton. Any discussion?
I just wondered if this webinar license that we're using here would be available for like an all-school assembly or something like that?
We could use it for large groups like that, yes. And we can also, the meetings and such can be expanded on a one-off basis if necessary. So there is flexibility and scalability.
Okay, thanks.
All right, roll call vote, please call it.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unzinger Fessero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Brousse?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, the next item is the Lunch Supervision Memorandum of Understanding. Our LAEA, Dr. Palichuk.
So this is a memorandum of understanding that if teachers on a voluntary basis would be willing to supervise their students during lunch, we could ask additional staff or if the student be in breakout areas of the school, possibly the classroom, that they would be compensated at the contractual rate, pro rata, $35 an hour, we would pro rata that. This would be completely on a voluntary basis. And teachers can opt in for as much or as little or not at all that they want. And the MOU doesn't include that. There would be no negative reflection upon the employees' professionalism should they choose not to.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Jablonsky, seconded by Dr. Zimmerman. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please call it.
Dr. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unzinger Fessero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Brousse?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, our next item is the six-year M O U, Dr. Palichuk.
So this is a memorandum of understanding that was presented to us by LAEA. And what they're seeking in this memorandum of understanding is that any absence that has depleted the whole membership of LAEA, the absence related to COVID, that's either the individual is ill with COVID and symptomatic and needs to stay home until they can recover and that quarantine period, or contact tracing, that they are ordered to be home under quarantine, that they would not deplete any days for their sick leave, emergency leave, of course, that would be considered administrative. And also the option as to whether or not they would want to engage with the Families First Granada Response Act, which is only active until December 31st. One thing to note is that PESRs, initially that was not PESR's eligible leave, but PESR's has made an adjustment to that that's just come out. And that's, you can see the notations there in the track changing, that no longer is PESR's implication something that an employee would have to consider. So that's something that was added well after we had this moving forward in motion. This would be eligible for just our members of LAEA.
Moved by Dr. Jablonsky.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Brousse. Any discussion?
I just have one question. So I understand if they contract or have symptoms or whatever, that the contact tracing, is that, that would be directly through like the Department of Health, not just saying, hey, I was around on blah, blah, blah? It would have to be like a documented tracing.
And we do receive, even if they, let's say, for example, their spouse ends up being positive through some other thing, we would receive documentation from the Department of Health saying that this would be the right asking part. So it would never come on the basis of they announcing that that was the case. We would vote for the documentation.
So if they were used 10 days, 14 days in this, in this manner, and then maybe another month, October, they have to do it again, and another month they do it again. Is there a possibility of them to, to then be overapproving their time because they're not using it as they might normally use it? Creating a bank of time, so to speak? Is that a possibility?
It is. I mean, we would have to make sure, and again, with this MOU, perhaps less to have documentation and it's COVID-related, even if it's multiple occurrences, one quarantine split, say, in October, and then again in January, for some reason through contact tracing, or they have symptoms and they're awaiting the test. One thing that's stipulated in here is that if they're able to tell a word, that they would. And we could make that work with the technology we have in place. I'd be concerned about the teacher not being with the students and providing instruction, even if it's virtual, knowing that's not optimal. Then the student's losing that for two weeks. But they wouldn't be depleting any of their sick, emergency, or personal if it's only COVID-related. If it's not related to COVID, and they, you know, the teacher has strep throat that has nothing to do with COVID, they're, they're using their days.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please call it.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unzinger Fessero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Brousse?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, moving on to board information. We did, oh, I'm sorry.
So quickly, this is an MOU with LAEA, that if there are any teachers that would want to volunteer to be these school teachers, and that would be in an extra duty, so they would do that after school, or if they gave up their period or some time like that, that's not already other professional time that, you know, they would be accountable to administration for, that we could compensate them. We do have a need for some additional teachers at the middle and high school level. And hopefully, this this provides, even for our e-school students, while they may be assigned a teacher from Accelerate Ed, we still want to make sure that there is an opportunity for them to have a community together, that they're able to have some interaction. And with certain subjects, and I just think of math and English as two examples, English is such an integral part of instruction, is discussion, and not having the opportunity to do that, just reading and taking tests or doing some writing, they don't really get the full experience that we want them to have in developing their communication skills and critical thinking skills. We also know with math that there are many students that might need to have the content presented to them in different ways, you know, re-presented to them. And, you know, having the opportunity for our kids to continue to have a connection with our teachers, and again, this is if teachers are able to do this, it's hard to know how many people would do this. You know, our folks have, you know, other obligations, like family or other responsibilities they have in the district, so they may not be able to do it all that they want to. We want to offer this an opportunity for them. Again, the compensation is equivalent to 10 hours a week, who are functioning as the teacher, having the meetings, and then also providing 10 hours a week is a $35 an hour rate.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Jablonsky, seconded by Dr. Zimmerman. Any discussion? Hearing done, roll call vote, please, Paula.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unzinger Fessero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Brows?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Motion, carry.
All right, sorry for skipping over that one. Now we will move on to board information. The first, letter A, the Siemens report we did get previously. I will then move on to the filters. Dr. Fairchild, anything?
Well, as discussed last week, we weren't sure if the board had any further questions, but in accordance with the guidelines that have been set up, this is one of our best ways to get the HEPA filtering in the three older buildings, as well as the more dense MIR14 filters for the high school. So if the board wished, you could take action on this this evening. As you can see from the quotes, it will take a little bit to get those items here, so depending on what you would like us to do, that's up to you, but you can see the numbers here.
Is it an idea to use just this, just O2 Prime for this and O2 Prime?
It was kind of, it was kind of an either/or, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Palantak, it was kind of an either/or, but I don't see why you couldn't do both.
Well, I'm just thinking that the portable units, after we have many HVAC renovations, will not be as useful, but the O2 Prime, we just heard, in your 60-year-old unit event, so that's an investment that we can keep. I've never thought, I'd say about the same cost?
Roughly, yes. Yeah, the O2 Prime, I think, is a little bit more, but yeah, yeah.
But, so for five, I think it's only $5,000 O2 Prime, or maybe it's $250,000. Even so, it's something we can keep for a very long time.
Yes.
But pretty quickly, I hope that we will find a way to put these portable units on service.
That's a possibility as well, so, you know, it's up to you guys.
How quickly can the O2 Prime, how quickly was that to be able to get that installed?
Um.
But it's also six weeks.
Yeah.
Are you going to go for the last, and he touched it, are you able to go into the other agenda and bring that on, I feel like this is too wild. What if you do?
Okay. Uh, let's see here.
Is this what the ad hoc committee was meaning to discuss?
We didn't make, maybe they're making decisions on that.
Let's see here. $316,000.
Do you remember from last meeting that the CARES money in combination with other grants would pay for this?
Yes, or it could be used for the HEPA air filters and the MIR14 filter.
But that $316 included not having to do the extra HEPA on the rooftop units, correct?
Uh, that's, that's correct, yes. That the O2 Prime would be on the high school rooftop units, so we would not have the MIR14 fi, the MIR14 filters would not be required.
So comparing here, what you say, 316?
316, two, yes.
So 222 plus 46. I still think it's a good investment.
So 269, roughly. So 316 versus 269.
Done.
Yeah.
What could we use that CARES money for if we didn't do either one of these?
Um, you could use it for a myriad of possibilities, including other equipment, you know, other trainings, a whole bunch of things.
So we could offset items that are currently coming out of our budget?
Uh, we could offset some of the COVID items that we have purchased already, yes, that's true.
Some with, um.
And, and we could also offset the cost of, you know, items for remote instruction, such as Canvas and Seesaw and other things like that.
Can we whiteboard this? No, I would.
I don't know how to get it out to the public.
We're using a moving camera, yeah?
We could, it's not a great camera.
I would just, I would just like to say that after sitting through one of those meetings, the ad hoc committee with the Siemens folks, that I'm far from convinced that we should spend that CARES money on either one of these solutions. I think we might be better off to, at the, at the moment, to offset other, other costs that we could, that we're having to impose.
Perhaps the committee could come back with a recommendation to the board?
That's what I thought was happening, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
There was one meeting from the committee. I think there is a possibility of, you know, possibly bringing Siemens back for another meeting, but, I mean, at this point, that hasn't happened, so the committee, you know, didn't really get together to form a, you know, a recommendation to bring back to the board at this time. So this is tonight for an informational item. We can certainly set something up with the committee, you know, just those members to get together to, to form a recommendation to bring back to the board, or again, if the committee members feel like they want another meeting or two meetings, whoever is needed with Siemens representatives, we can certainly do that as well.
Is it a problem that we just put the health and safety plan, which includes the filtration, if we don't take action on this?
That's what I was thinking, yeah. So I was thinking that it was going to be, when we had the discussion, and even in the presentation, it seemed that O2 Prime was the better investment, because first of all, the HEPA filters listed, but they're going to have to be replaced, and we're not even getting the number that we need to have to be continuously replacing for as long as we have the situation we're in, whereas O2 Prime, you buy a plan, it's the alphabet. So even that $46,000 could balloon very quickly. And then for the other thing, the portable in-room units, like I said, we, I would hope that we'll make those up fully pretty quickly, and within two or three years, well, well short of their service lifetime, let's say that, right? So well short of the 10-year-one-year, or whatever they might call it. And so that's why I thought the O2 Prime was better. And that's why I'm going to whiteboard, because we're talking about like a total cost of ownership situation, right?
Yeah, I mean, perhaps, if I may make a recommendation, let's do that as a committee. Whiteboard it, put it together as a presentation, bring it back to the board with the recommendation.
I think that'd be a good idea.
Just, just a thought.
Can I make a, just a suggestion for the committee to think about or talk about? We have several old buildings within our district, and I know in the past we've talked about like a bridging building, or some new building, not in the very near future, but somewhere in the future, would the O2 Prime be able to be moved and placed on another building?
Yeah, that's what you just said, right? You said it can go on a 60-year-old unit and be taken off and come immediately, that's right? Yeah.
That's, yeah, that's my understanding as well.
But, okay.
Yep.
I heard the pinko on the 60-year-old building, I didn't hear him, him taking off of the 60-year-old building.
Yes.
We'll double check on that, but I, I understood that.
Yeah.
Right.
Yep.
And I would want that in writing.
Absolutely.
I would want it explicitly in writing, you can take it off your old unit events and put it on to the new unit. The one thing it does mean is that we would be making a decision about the type of cooling that we would be doing in middle school. Middle school, they only wanted the option to do the cooling on the existing unit.
Yeah, the, the middle school, we would, I mean, they would, they would install the O2 Prime on a current system, which is electric heat, but then, you know, as we move forward with HVAC renovations in the middle school, then that would obviously affect the choice of, you know, heating and cooling system that we use, since we obviously want to get away from electric heat. And that may, you know, look at things accordingly, may adjust things accordingly.
All right, so moving on for the board information items, just in essence of the time, I don't have a whole lot of other things, other than things that have been discussed already tonight. Mrs. Moser, I will turn it over to you for your.
We have a MOU between the LAEA and ASME.
Oh, I'm sorry. I am.
If you switch meetings, I don't know if you switched meetings.
He did.
Yes.
Yeah.
I am, okay. Sorry about that.
Come back.
All right, let her see, sorry, I'll pull up on the iPad. I did switch meetings, so I'm calling the iPad. Sorry, so let her see the memorandum of understanding between the two labor persons.
So this is a MOU between ASME and LAEA regarding any planning that teachers might do that they aren't taking, bargaining work away from our ASME members. So this is in every two of them, the district's just aware of it, and just sharing that does enough.
And the board does not need to take any action because we're not partying in that agreement, so, all right, so now that I'm looking into right meeting, not from last meeting, I will turn it over to Dr. Palantak for the superintendent's report.
So LA is, LA, L A S D S convention for the first day of in-service, convocation for first day of in-service for teachers will be on Monday, August 31st. While many teachers have been in to set up their classrooms to help plan professional development, this will be the first time the faculty will be together since March 13th, albeit via Zoom. Our convocation will be held overseas as we need to abide by the governor's guidelines regarding the number of people in one room for non-instructional purposes. I am excited to welcome back our faculty and staff, as well as acknowledge our faculty's and staff's milestones within the district. The upcoming week of in-service will focus on the learning management systems that will be put in place for the students, should we need to do remote virtual instruction for all or some students. In addition, teachers will review what content and skills students may have, may have missed during our closure time back in March through the end of May, to determine what upcoming to be reviewed or re-taught. So we do recognize that not all students are able to participate in the learning, so we need to recalibrate going into this school year. PIW's ruling on high school athletics allowed us to begin our preseason on August 24th. He happened to align the athletic season schedule so that schools will have a conference play. The Green Dragon Foundation, in partnership with lifting up Lewisburg, awarded the district $14,100 for the purchase of Tensive Kelly Elementary School and Lindtown Elementary School, picnic tables for the high school, allocated a block of funds to be used to help support families in need with school supplies or internet access, and the purchase of virtual equipment for our lane crew. On behalf of the school district, I want to thank the members of the Green Dragon Foundation and lifting up Lewisburg for their support, as well as the many donors who are helping our students and our families. And in closing, I want to emphasize to our staff, students, and families that we are committed to ensuring everyone can be safe in school. This means that every person has to do their part in wearing their masks and socially distancing. This isn't just when we're in school, it needs to be part of the routines that everybody practices once they go outside of their homes and into the community. This is the only way that we can have in-person learning for our students, for as long as it's safe to have it, is if everyone takes the steps to be just a little bit selfish. Masking and social distancing is the only way we can keep COVID-19 in bay long enough for the researchers to develop the treatments and vaccines for everyone in the world. Thank you.
This is Moser, I'm curious, where you prepared, which is, as I'm calling you.
And I could have, I could have ad-libbed something for you, buddy.
Sorry about that. Any board liaison committee reports?
I met last week, it was our, we don't meet in July, so move back, and you have the report in the agenda, but I would imagine that Dr. Palantak could tell you, I mean, they've been very busy, being incredibly supportive and pulling superintendents together and providing resources. As I say, almost every time, I'm consistently amazed at how much they do.
Sun Tech met, or JOC met last week, and Jen gave us an update on how school opening was last Monday, and it went very well. The stumbling block that they've been having is when the students are at home and doing their online coursework. They were with, when it was in March, when they were shut down, the students weren't given a certain direction. Now, they have to treat it like a classroom, like they were in, in-house, and that's been quite an adjustment. Some kids think, well, they can go out and work their jobs, but they don't realize that it's, it's considered a grade now, and so she's going to communicate with their parents that this is a must that they have to do, even though they're not in the building. And some of the classes, like the electrical wiring, they went home with little lightbulb on boards that they could wire the electricity for the lightbulb. Someone are going to go home with little blocks to build things, so they're coming up with some interesting ideas on how to, to do hands-on training with the students when they're at home. So other than that, and also they've been doing major roof improvements, you know, updates in the roofs, so that's been the big thing over at Sun. Thank you.
Just elaborate, Dr. Palantak mentioned in her report, the Green Dragon Foundation had approved the, the transfer funds for the district's purchase of the tents and the picnic tables. The picnic tables are for the courtyard here in the high school to be able to allow students to have the time to spread out a little bit more outside, take their masks off while leaving, so that was a really cool thing that we'll see come across in consent agenda here in the upcoming meetings, but again, just to elaborate where the picnic tables were going, that was a, the idea to just, like, so be able to provide some more seating for lunches, get, get some students out of mind, so I thought that was noteworthy to have. Any other liaison committee reports? All right, I will move on then to the consent agenda. Is there any items anybody, board members would like to have pulled out, voted on separately? Hearing done, do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Okay. Moved by Mrs. Brows? Seconded by Dr. Jablonsky. Any discussion? All right, roll call vote, please, Paula.
Dr. Unzinger Fessero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Brows?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Motion, carry.
We will move on to director's comments. Ariane, you know what that means?
Wow, I really do, I really do. I just honestly, all the incredible work everybody's doing, I couldn't be more grateful. I'm so happy to hear, especially from all the principals and Mrs. Moser and Dr. Palantak, sort of how much further you are within, it feels more comfortable, everybody sounds more comfortable, and that makes me, as a parent and a board member, more comfortable. The Green Dragon Foundation and the parent committee that did all that incredible work, I'm wearing your work, the T-shirt and the mask. I had so many people that loved this, I might, I might as well, too. And I just am so grateful that you did that, so thank you so much. And again, I'm going to echo what Dr. Palantak said about the masks, I mean, what we do matters for getting our kids back in school. You want them in person, wear your mask.
Lifting up Lewisburg was a great program, so I'm really grateful to see the community pull together like that. It's that kind of stuff that's going to get us through this.
It's that kind of stuff that's going to get us through this.
I was very happy to see the social distancing dots and the signs as I entered this school thing tonight. And I share Mary Ann's feeling that, that does bolster my confidence. And I'd just like to say that, you know, I know everybody here wants the best for our kids and our staff and faculty and our district. And even when we disagree, which we do very collegially, I know that we do not disagree about wanting what's best for the kids. And I'm grateful to be with people who share that value.
Well said. Thank you. I just want to give another round of shout-outs to all of the maintenance and janitorial staff for all of the buildings. I think they've done amazing work trying to get ready for the unknown right out there. So thank you to all of them. Thank you to all of the principals, administrators, for all the work that they're doing around, you know, balancing schedules and trying to figure out, you know, how many kids in the classes and how we distance the rooms. And it's just a crazy fluid time right now, and being able to stay on top of that, I think it's got to be incredibly difficult. And along with that, the teachers and their flexibility and being able to, you know, go with the flow, trying to get their classes and everything ready. And then just to echo everybody on the Lifting Up Lewisburg and the Green Dragon Foundation. We, we owe so much to the Green Dragon Foundation. It's just unbelievable the work that they do for us, so thank you.
I did all the comments and just want to say thank you to anyone that wasn't included in the thank yous, because I know there's a ton of people behind the scenes doing this, that, or the other thing that are like, hey, what about me? So shout-out to you. All the moms, I'm saying.
That's it.
I'm good. John?
I'm good.
Mary, Cory, anything to add?
You're muted, Mary.
All right, maybe, I don't know. Anyways, I'd like to ditto what everybody said too. And, and I agree with you, Virginia, we all want what's best for our kids and, and the parents. And I know there's concerns, I do have some concerns, but I guess we got to kind of jump into this, and it's going to change. Who knows what's going to happen? Nobody knows, that's the problem, the uncertainty. And I want to say hats off to the staff, the administration, for doing a great job through all this. I know it's so difficult, and I just want you to know, we appreciate you. Sometimes we don't always show it, but thank you.
Cory? Mary?
I want to add to all the thanks and appreciation that everyone has expressed, that you think it's important that everyone knows and recognizes how much work this is. I also want to call out a big thank you to the teachers and administrators for what I'm going to assume is a great migration of all of your teaching materials that you've accumulated over all your years of teaching into these new learning management systems that you may not have had. So thank you for doing this. I know it's way more than the few people out there for, you know, the in-service agents. And I want to echo, it's great to see the signage, it's great to be messaging that early and for people to kind of get used to it, so everyone knows, you know, I'm with that, I'm masked, I'm standing on my dots, like all of these things that I think will become like little inside jokes at some point, you know? In 2021, I'm all jokes about my dots. And the words that came up a lot were comfortable and confident. You can remember a couple of weeks ago, that was the thing we kept coming back to, that we want everyone coming into the buildings to feel comfortable and confident. And I agree, I think we're a lot closer there. But I, I also want to agree with Virginia and Mary Ann Lisa said, is that, because I almost always, always make my decisions on mask, and I think tonight I made my decision on hope. There you go.
Oh, am I going to do that?
Yeah. Thank you. And certainly, I would say, you know, I should have mentioned this in my superintendent's report, that I have an incredible administrative team, and I've been getting to meet the staff. It's just, they're excited, they want to be in with the kids, they want to make sure they can do it safely, do it right by them. And I'm just very happy that getting to meet them, I'm going to have to learn them twice over once we take the mask off. I was identifying, but that's okay, so, thank you.
We have one question.
Yes.
I want to know who let Lisa move over to our side of the, our side of the board there.
We had to compact the circle, Cory, I'm sorry.
I had to fill the whole, you guys left us.
All right, I don't believe I have anything else to add. At this time, I will entertain any citizens' comments to the board on non-agenda items.
Okay, we have possibly some comments. I have at least one here. Samantha Pearson, 200 North Third Street. Union County has just now reported five straight days without a new confirmed case. This is great news and may be a reflection of good behavior taking place several weeks ago in the same way that the sudden rise in cases in the county that began at the beginning of August was indicative of more lax behavior starting in mid-July. It's hard to keep track of these delayed or lagging impacts mentally, but as we move forward, we must. We won't know the results of the return of Bucknell and the reopening of public schools, whether already enacted in surrounding counties or just telegraphed through pre-reopening activities like sports practices here for several weeks yet. Let's hope that behavior changes that may have kicked in two weeks ago held steady and will similarly depress new case counts going forward. And let's do our part for the case counts we want to see or not see in two weeks and continue to emphasize masks, distancing, and hygiene throughout the community, both in informal and formal settings like businesses and schools, and also during our time off. A dip in cases might have the appearance of a signal to relax infection mitigation measures, but it should instead be a sign of the need to maintain vigilance. Similarly, we should be cautious about activities such as sports or music that might make it hard to put public health best practices in place. And let's see here, and we read that one, so we can refresh, see if we got some new ones. Oh, we have a new one here on non-agenda items. Tara Michaels, 1307 Jefferson Avenue. Dr. Pollenstock, thank you for requesting more information on data from the state. I hope the board considers the risk to students extremely low and the difficulty that constant change presents to working parents when amending the current plan. In addition, please consider the mental health and quality of education for the students. Please continue with your five-day plan. And that's it for comments.
Any other citizens' comments to the board on non-agenda items? From anybody in the room? Well, I love you, Matt. I will move on then to adjournment. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Dr. Fisera, seconded by Dr. Jablonsky. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any votes?